Welcome back to our meeting. I hope everybody's great. That was a good one. We are here back in the council meeting for today. We have been informed that the Board of Water and Power Commissioners took action today in response to our earlier 245 rejection of the ECAF increases to the power rates. Ms. Perry, if you have a motion, I believe?
I'm sorry.
Please, Ms. -- sorry, Mr. City Attorney, did you?
Is there going to be a Rule 23 motion before this?
Yeah. Under -- under Rule 23, I think we have to make the first motion. We can make that together all up. Yes, please, if you say the findings, Mr. City Attorney.
Is the city attorney going to -- okay, wait, I can't hear, I can't hear.
Okay, so, under Rule 23 pursuant to the section, as provided by Section 54954.2b 2 of the Government Code, pursuant to Rule 23 of the Rules of the City Council, I move that there's an immediate need to take action on the vote of March 30, 2010, of the Board of Water and Power Commissioners when they acted to adopt an ECAF adjustment of .7 cents per kilowatt hour, including .2 cents of that amount to deposit it in the Renewable Energy and Energy Efficiency Trust Fund within the ECAF fund. That was number two on the board agenda. And I further move that pursuant to Section 245b of the Los Angeles City Charter, the city -- well, let's just assert jurisdiction for a start. And that this action came to our attention after the posting of our regular agenda. This just happened, and on the findings, I will speak to that, that it just happened before we re-adjourned. Okay? Anybody on the findings? No, not, this is just on the findings. Yeah, I mean, if you want to dispute the findings, you can debate the findings right now?
We're going to split them into two motions.
Okay.
One is on the Rule 23, and the second one is on the 245.
This is just on Rule 23. This is not yet to reject or to accept or whatever, okay? So, the board, on item number two, as I stated, voted to adopt an ECAF adjustment of .7 cents per kilowatt hour with .2 cents of that amount to be deposited in the Renewable Energy and Energy Efficiency Trust Fund. Okay? No?
I'm out of here.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you can move not to waive jurisdiction in this one act, you can start.
Do they adopt the -- I think, just to be clear for Mr. Alacone, he asked if they adopted any amendments. All I know that we're asserting jurisdiction over is that piece. Okay?
Voting on the Rule 23 first.
Correct.
And the findings are made.
Before any motions. Anybody else on the findings? Just on the findings, yeah. If not, let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote on the findings.
12 -- excuse me, 11 ayes, one no.
We're voting on the Rule 23 findings.
On the findings?
This is just on the findings.
This is on the findings, Mr. Parks. Mr. Parks wanted to be recorded as a yes.
-- services and ask them to hold on the test.
Yeah, let's revote that because the fire alarm people are talking.
A yes vote is to assert jurisdiction over this. A no vote is to not assert jurisdiction.
All right, let's --
Oh, sorry, this is just on the findings. And then we vote -- sorry, this is just on the findings. Does anybody object to the findings, then we vote on whether or not we assert jurisdiction.
For the purposes of the public, Mr. President, could you ask the city attorney or yourself to explain what it means to vote on the findings?
To vote on the findings just means whether or not we agree that this came to our attention after the posting of the agenda and whether it is legal pursuant to Rule 23 just to consider this. That's it. Please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay? That is before us. Now, Ms. Perry?
All right, two questions. Maybe the CLA here?
City Attorney, too.
And the city -- Mr. Miller is here. I don't know if there's a city attorney here, but I would like for the CLA to outline what are options here. What it means, number one, not to assert jurisdiction through the decision that the Commission of Water and Power just took, and what it would mean to do that. What does it mean if we do not assert 245 tonight and do not assert jurisdiction?
The council under the charter has five meeting days after the board acts to assert jurisdiction. If you don't within those five meeting days, then the board action would become final. If you do assert jurisdiction, then you have 21 days in which to dispose of the item in some fashion, and if you don't, then it becomes final.
Okay, repeat that again.
The council has five meeting days in which to assert jurisdiction over the board action. If you do not do that within those five meeting days, it becomes final. If you do assert jurisdiction, then you have 21 days in which to deal with the item. If you don't deal with the item within those 21 days, then it becomes final.
If we do not take any action tonight, what happens?
Then you would have four more meeting days after tonight in which to assert jurisdiction. The board action would not become final until you -- until that time period expires or until you waive the 245 review.
What action would we have to take to cause the board's -- how do I explain this? Tell me what legislative action we'd have to take tonight or not take to cause the board to go back or revert back to the .1 cent proposal that was in existence before this all started.
Well, at this point, the board hasn't acted on the .1. To do what you're suggesting, you would need to assert jurisdiction and veto the board action, and then in essence, there would be nothing on the table.
All right, all right, well, then I'd like to make a motion to assert jurisdiction.
Okay, this is a three-step dance, folks. There's the Rule 23 finding, there's assertion of jurisdiction, and then any action taken to reject or otherwise.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Kretz?
Just a point of clarification, because I'm not sure it was made entirely clear even to me. So, if we assert jurisdiction and don't take an action in the next couple of days, we pass the April 1st, and for the purposes of passing this, we've essentially missed the deadline, correct?
Yes, in order for the board's action today to become final, you would need to vote to waive the 245 review before the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay, so, if -- what would the impact be if we waited a few days or ran the whole 21 days?
Then the increase then would not be in effect on April 1st. The next time it could be in effect would be July 1st.
Okay, and so, whatever impacts that would have on us, which we'll discuss, happen unless we take action by tomorrow?
The end of the day tomorrow.
End of the day tomorrow.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Ms. Perry, so we want to vote on the assertion of jurisdiction?
Yeah.
Okay. So, folks, on assertion of jurisdiction pursuant to Section 245 of the Los Angeles City Charter, assert jurisdiction over the Board of Water and Power Commissioners' action of March 31, 2010, item number two, relative to the ECAF. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Wait, hold on. Mr. City Attorney? Okay, before the -- I'm sorry, I thought it would be after the jurisdiction had been asserted. The city attorney is saying we should take public comment before the vote. So Noel Weiss is our first speaker on this. We have not yet voted to take the assert jurisdiction.
Two words, assert jurisdiction.
Thank you, Wayne Spinler.
Doodle.
Thank you. You win for being half as long. Yes, Mr. Parks, you have a --
I'd just like to get something clarified.
Yes, sir.
Get something clarified. We've gotten two different interpretations. If we don't assert jurisdiction in five days, do their actions become a valid action? Or if we don't assert jurisdiction, does their actions go to zero? So which one is it?
Mr. City Attorney?
If council does not assert jurisdiction, and council does not waive jurisdiction, and the matter will not become final until four more meeting days, as Mr. Miller said earlier. If council asserts jurisdiction, it still is not a final action until council acts. Council could hold on to it for 21 days or act tonight to either veto or waive jurisdiction.
So the information we've gotten earlier, that if we didn't assert jurisdiction, that it just basically dissolves itself, is not accurate then?
Well, it depends what language. Maybe the CLA could give us more detail. Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller? Do you know, do you recall the language in the board action? Did it say the next time, or is it April 1st, or it doesn't happen at all? Mr. Parks is asking, in other words, if we didn't assert jurisdiction, would that increase come into effect at some future date, or would it just die?
I believe that the board didn't specify a date. They said for one quarter.
Okay. So it sounds like, Mr. Parks, that it would go into effect, but at a later date.
At a later date. So they don't have to meet the April 1st date?
I beg your pardon, I just got clarification from the staff. The board did make it clear at the end when they were moving the item to be effective April 1st.
Okay, so if they don't meet that, if we do not assert jurisdiction and they don't meet the April 1st date, then they can't move forward?
Mr. City Attorney, is that --
They specifically said the 1st.
If there's no language with the force in effect, if there's no language that says that it would be for a future quarter but only for April 1st, if that deadline has passed, the force in effect of this would be for that increase not to happen if we took no action as well.
So we show us the 1st?
That is my understanding, that the quarterly requirement has to be in place by tomorrow.
Yes.
And if council does not waive jurisdiction, then the board action would not be final. And so then, that increase could not take effect until after April 1st, which would assert --
Which means it wouldn't take effect. Yes, Ms. Perry?
And I appreciate the more esoteric points of the discussion that the city attorney is trying to walk us through, and I know that it's difficult, but I think for, to the benefit of the public and people who are keenly interested in this issue because it affects their daily lives, I would prefer that we assert jurisdiction, and for those who wish to do so, veto this decision or reject their decision and send it back, because I think it's much more straightforward.
Yes, I think the city attorney was just responding to Mr. Parks's questions.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
Okay, so we have a motion to assert jurisdiction. Everybody clear on the vote of what they're voting for? A yes vote is to assert jurisdiction.
Clear my board?
It will clear. When we open the roll, please? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that is now before us. Mr. City Attorney?
How do we have to vote to reject?
You'd have to move to do that.
All right, well, I would like to make a motion to reject the decision rendered by the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, Board of Commissioners, this date, which is March 31st this evening, and send our --
Second about Mr. Smith. Yes, Mr. City Attorney?
If the council member could use the word veto, that would make things more clear.
Proper word is veto. The proper word, I'm sorry, Mr. President, is veto. Veto the decision of the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power Commissioners.
Thank you very much. That motion is before us. Mr. Labons, does anyone want to be heard?
A city attorney or the city clerk, is there anything in writing from 111 North Hope Street, the action of the Board of Commissioners that we just hear? We don't have it written down. There's no written action of the board?
I can't hear you.
I think they moved the exact same as the .8 from before, they just moved it to .7 and shaved .1 off of the Green Energy Fund.
Okay. I heard it. Thank you.
We do have a public comment card on the substance of that motion. Wayne Spinler, if you'd like to come forward?
Yep, assert jurisdiction, good. Veto it, throw it out completely, because the board countermanded everything that you guys attempted to do and raised it substantially higher than it should be. So take this decision, completely overturn it, make them start from scratch. Thank you.
Thank you. Noel Weiss?
Council members, the arrogance of the DWP is beyond overwhelming. It's the first meeting I have ever been to, it is the most incredible thing I have ever witnessed. There was no mention of the 72 million transfer payment in connection with the board's action. I think that's a consideration. I wanted to reiterate the points that Mr. Krikorian made in his comments before about the fallacy of this bond rating being the overriding consideration. It is not the overriding consideration, and in fact, during the debate, it came up. Well, one of the commissioners said, so Eric Garcetti and Jan Perry said 6. You guys are saying 7. You mean to tell me 1 cent is going to make a difference one way with the bond rating? You know what, they couldn't even answer it. I mean, to ask the question is to demonstrate that the fallacy of the entire situation. It is not, I think at this point, it's time for this council to begin to assert itself. The public will appreciate it. And you know, once you do, it's like a little kid. They will respond, because no more promise for performance, we've had it, we've been succumbed by it, it's not good policy. This council must say no right now. And you know what, the DWP going forward, they'll respond, they'll do the right thing, because it's time that they begin to listen. And what we're talking about, really the important thing is, this is something that's so unique, because here's an opportunity for landlords and tenants to come together under a common scenario. This hurts landlords and tenants, and there's no reason why. I think this vote in many ways unites the city, plus Mr. Smith's point during the debate was an accurate one. When we come down, and the city has to pay more, the city is going to lose jobs. It's just irrational on every front possible. I ask for this council to vote this down tonight and let the chips fall where they may, and you know what, everything's going to be fine.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. That closes public comment. Mr. Rosendahl, did you want to speak on this?
I just wanted to ask our CLA over there. The gun-to-the-head business that we've been hearing off and on for a couple of three weeks, which had something to do with the 73 million or the additional 20 million, which is 93 million, or whatever, for the General Treasury. Mr. Miller, in any way, shape, or form, does our action affect that?
Well, Mr. Rosendahl, in the final analysis, that transfer is up to the discretion of the board. The acting general manager stated in the meeting today that he would not recommend to the board that they approve the balance of the transfer if the council does not accept the rate increase.
So they're basically putting the gun to the head and saying, you either go for it or you don't get the money?
The transfer is up to the discretion of the board. And the acting general manager in the board meeting this evening indicated that if the council does not approve the rate increase, he would not recommend to the board that they make the balance of the transfer.
Okay.
Any other comments, folks? Now we have the motion before us. This is the motion to reject?
Motion to reject. Or veto. Motion to veto. Motion to veto.
Okay. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is rejected. Now, as a point of, as a procedural point, and I don't, and I don't know their schedule, colleagues, there is a deadline of midnight tomorrow night. We're checking in with folks. If the board does reconvene, they do have the option, but we have to obviously see who's going to be here and whether we can meet in any special meeting. Ms. Hahn?
Is there a procedure where we can, at this point, waive a 245 ahead of time with conditions?
Mr. City Attorney?
You could, you could have a waiver of review of an individual anticipated action of a board.
Right.
And so whether you can be very specific and --
I mean, colleagues, it might be, it might be in our best interest to yet send that message again, that in fact, if the DWP board hears us again, that what we have agreed to is a .5 with a .1 for renewables, if they agree to that, then we will waive the 245, and the action becomes final tomorrow night. We wouldn't have to convene again. And that would be just a loud message, there wouldn't be any lobbying going on by anybody. It would be very clear, we'll, if you come back with that decision, we'll waive the 245, and your action will become final whenever you take that action. Is that right?
I'm just not --
By the way, just because they adjourned the meeting, not recessed it, even though we recommended that they should probably recess, they adjourned the meeting, which means they would have to post it with 24 hours notice, which means they'd have to post sometime after this, and we'd have to come here after they take action, which would mean --
No, 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 not if we, that's what I'm saying, if they --
So, sorry, we wouldn't have to necessarily come back together if you did that.
Yeah, if we did this.
They would have to post after 9:30.
Whenever they did, it wouldn't matter to us if we preempted it right now by saying with conditions, if they came back with a specific action, we could, we would waive the 245, and it'd become final.
We have Ms. Perry, Mr. Parks, then Mr. -- Ms. Perry?
I also wanted to make a motion to request that the Department of Water and Power fulfill the commitment it made in Budget and Finance Committee mid-February?
Mid-February, during the initial transfer.
That they made in Budget and Finance Committee, mid-February of this year, regarding the initial transfer of 73 million as soon as possible, and making that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
Mr. Rosendahl seconded?
Okay, if you do that, you're going to, the city attorney is saying you're going to have to make the findings on your own, under a separate Rule 23. He won't make those findings for us.
He won't make the findings for us?
No. This, council is discussing --
We just found out today, we just found out today that they weren't going to do this.
They just found it from the acting general manager.
April 1st deadline. We could help them --
From the, yeah, from the acting general manager on the record up at the commission meeting that they just adjourned. Can we do it as a Rule 16?
Are you sure you can always introduce Rule 16? That would come back to us.
All right, well, then I, fine, let's do it as a Rule 16. As long as we get the request on the record.
Okay, we'll make sure that, we're still in working time right now, so is that sufficient, Madam Clerk, as an oral motion, or should we try to put something on paper? Okay, if, why don't we work on drafting that right now, and it should be able to be drafted in a minute or two, if somebody can put that down on paper, okay? Mr. Parks is next, then Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Krikorian.
I just want to comment in Ms. Hahn's suggestion. The concern I have with the suggestion is that that's exactly what we did yesterday, is we sent them what the council thought they would approve, which was 5 plus 1. They chose not to follow that, so sending it back to them and saying 5 plus 1 appears to be a waste of our time and theirs. And so I think that's what my concerns are. The other issue, I just asked Ms. Perry on a friendly amendment to her motion, is that, is that it may be in our interest to do a Rule 16 and have it here Tuesday, and also a specific date certain, as opposed to as soon as possible.
Okay, would you want to amend that? Well, why did you guys, I think the city clerk has asked for, if we can, to put that in written form? So if we can just draft that, you can put the date in, choose that, we'll hang out for a second to do that. Mr. Smith?
Just one of Ms. Hahn's suggestions, and I think that, while that may or may not be a good idea, that you missed the timeframe, there's no way legally to meet the April 1st deadline date for them to act, so they lose the quarter no matter what.
Can we have a clarification, maybe in the CLA? I thought there was still another two hours, or two and a half, two hours, 45 minutes.
Technically, they could agendize a meeting for tomorrow night after 24 hours from now.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
They have till midnight tomorrow night.
Right, so if we, if we put a condition --
Okay, but then we would still have to take action back, right?
No.
Ms. Hahn's motion would be to not have to take an action, which the city attorney said would be kind of --
By saying we're not going to 245, if we do what I told you to do.
We waive our review under the condition that it comes back at .5 and 1. So if they want to make their April 1st deadline, they'll take the deal.
Okay, Mr. Krikorian is next.
Well, if they want to make their April 1st deadline, they'll take the deal, we won't have to waive it, and it's good. There, they save space over there.
I think that one problem with that is that, you know, the process that this has gone through seems to be kind of a, an ongoing negotiation from the microphone. Even today, as the board was meeting, proposals were being thrown out to modify the council's previous action, and I, I think I would feel uncomfortable to give some preemptive approval of anything, of this complexity that didn't have exact chapter and verse. And I think it's important for this council to continue to have its ability to weigh in unprecisely whatever it is that the board votes upon, if the board votes on anything at all. So I'd feel uncomfortable giving up that authority, I think, unless we, well, I'd feel uncomfortable giving up that authority, I think, under any circumstances.
Our charter gives us the ability to set very strict conditions and requirements on this pre-approval, and I think we could do that. So I just think it's a way to let them know, if they want to make the deal, if they want to make April 1st, so, you know, they can meet late tomorrow night, and we're okay if they come back with what we've asked for. But that's okay, as soon as I still want to do. You want to meet tomorrow night, 11 o'clock?
Mr. Zahn?
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you. Some of us are not supporting the 5 plus the 1, and if they come back with what the council majority supported, there's some of us that voted no on that. We continue, at least I continue to vote no on that, so if that is what the Department of Water and Power Commission wishes to do, there's still members, I believe, in this council that are not willing to support that. So while some may, I for one am not willing to support any increase, including the one that originally proposed by this council, the 5 plus the 1, so I just want that on the record. And then whoever else is opposed to that, please come forward and voice your concern.
Ms. Perry?
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Garcetti and I actually went to the commission meeting today, and we spoke in great detail about our vote here in council, and then the board and the staff presented a brand-new report dated March 31, 2010, and this is my opinion, that it was filled with inaccuracies and statements that I believe were, I will say politely, very inaccurate, and left out major gaps in our discussion that we had on the record with PA consultants. And one of the most egregious was, they implied that PA consultants' recommendation of .5 cents per kilowatt hour occurred in a void when in fact, I did ask that question in my committee, and again, down here on the council floor, what was the absolute minimum that the Department of Water and Power would need to remain solvent in the immediate short term, and what is the absolute minimum, in their opinion, the department would need to maintain its bond rating status? And they did not include that in their report. Once I read that, you know, I gotta say, I was pretty much done at that point, because I think we both went there with slightly different positions, but in very, very much in good faith, and they did not consider our actions very seriously. So I would just like to go ahead and veto this action and move on.
Point of order, Mr. President, I don't mean to put a wrench on this, but
Mr. Huthar?
We did take action. The item was listed on the agenda. I don't believe we should have discussion after action has been taken. I just want to make sure that we also role model good procedures in this chambers. Are we properly conducting this discussion, Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. City Attorney? Respond to that, please.
If the, if Councilmember Hahn wants to make her 245 anticipatory waiver motion, that would have to be, that would have to be in the form of another Rule 23 motion.
There is no motion on the table.
Correct.
So we shouldn't have any discussion, correct? Unless there's a motion on the table, and we're Rule 23 in it, correct? So I just want to make sure procedurally we're following our own rules.
Mr. Garcetti? Okay, I mean, I thought I heard a move of that, but Ms. Hahn would have to go through that, so I, that's why. I think, I mean, there's two ways of doing this, colleagues, or there's three. One is to, of course, not have anything moved tonight, and not try to accommodate any other future meetings of the board, and what that means is there will be no rate increase for April 1st, and we'll come what may in the unknown manifestations of that.
And we'll come what may in the unknown manifestations of that. Second would be for us to do something proactive, like Ms. Hahn was saying. Now, that motion has been made, or maybe it has, the findings should be made under Rule 23 for us to formally vote on it. But in doing that, that would mean they could meet 24 hours from now, do the same thing, and we wouldn't meet. The third way is that they can still take that meeting either way. And then the question for everybody here, if we haven't done it proactively, is whether or not, if we called a meeting tomorrow night at whatever it is, 10:30, whether people would come to that. So I just want to lay out those three options for the council. Ms. Hahn, I certainly have no problem, and I would support you if you wanted to do that. I'd rather do that than come back at 10:30 at night.
Me too.
Mr. Labange?
There was a great movie made in 1974. And then that movie made in 1974 got great acclaim. I don't feel comfortable this late at night on a process. It's in the first district. The movie's title's in the first district. So I don't feel, I don't feel appropriate because I do believe in engaging people, as all of us do. I do believe in engaging neighborhoods. I do believe, and I know I took a call an hour ago from a 60-year-old woman who's unemployed, crying, living in an apartment house. Her husband's left her, and "I'm going to raise the rates," she says to Taliban. And I don't want to raise the rates, but I want to make sure we have a healthy Department of Water and Power. And I want to listen to the consultants and listen to the staff and try to find a balance. We found a balance yesterday of five plus one. We found a first step forward towards green. But yet, they couldn't hear that on the 15th floor at 111 North Hope Street. So I think we follow what Ms. Perry said, and then we have to take future steps. Because even if we solve this problem in the next 24 to 48, I don't feel good about being a representative without engaging the people that I represent and having Water and Power staff come to explain why this is important for the future of Los Angeles. So I share the sentiments, I believe, of the chairperson of the committee.
Ms. Hahn?
Well, I would like to put back forward that Charter section 245B, the waiver. And I think we put on there, what we're basically saying is, we're sending them back the same proposal they had before them today. Exact same one. If they agree to that exactly the way it is, we would agree to waive our review. That means it would become final tomorrow, whenever they meet. And those of you who voted no on that, you already voted no on it. You already voted no on what we sent to DWP. So you're on record being against it. You don't really have to vote no on it again. You, it's the proposal, you can if you want to, but it's the proposal we sent to them today. This is what was before them. And, you know, six of you, six of you voted no. So you've already voted no on it. But it's, the majority of us sent that to DWP. So if they vote on that and agree on it exactly the way it is, no adding, no subtracting, no, you know, pontificating, nothing, then we waive it. If they make one change to that, if they make one, you know, change, I, T, anything, then we take jurisdiction. And that's how you do it. And I think that gives them a very solid message from it. I think it keeps us from being lobbied by anyone. We've said it very clear. Here, we're going to tell you again, this is what we stand by. If you approve it, it's done tomorrow night at midnight, and we don't have to meet again. If they make any change, and you can all be there at the meeting if you want, if they make any change, then we reserve our right to review it.
Thank you.
And I just think that would be, so I'll make that motion.
Mr., there's a motion on the floor?
Isn't there a second? First of all?
No second?
Actually, before, there has to be Rule 23 findings that there's an immediate need to act, and it's happened since the posting of today's agenda. Both of those have been met, I believe, because the Board acted an hour and a half ago, and there's an immediate need to act before tomorrow. So those are your findings. But the council, you need a second, and council needs to vote on those findings. It's a 10-vote item.
Mr. Wesson, follow Mr. Corretts, Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Smith.
Okay.
And the roll continues. Mr. Wesson?
Mr. City Attorney, if you have been drinking coffee today, we're going to end that, okay? That was some of the greatest frontier gibberish that I've heard in a while. Members, cool it a lot. Members, seriously, what the commissioners at DWP did today was really an affront to us. They were, it was, they were requested to recess, and they opted to adjourn. That makes, I don't think any of us feel good about that action. But I think we should step back for a moment because I don't want this body to be the body that's, that the last act that we take tonight kills what we did yesterday. I understand that there are people that feel uncomfortable. But we did vote yesterday, the majority of us, on a plan that would have been five plus And I think that there is a way, the city attorney articulated, that there is a way, I believe, and that's what we should do. Because if we do that, then we do not close the door like they closed the door on us. I don't want us to be the ones that, at the end of the day, are responsible. If you voted on the five plus one yesterday, you should be comfortable on voting on the 5.1 today and sending or saying to them, if you approve this exactly the way that we voted on it yesterday, then we will allow you to act on it by midnight tomorrow. It handles, Mr. Rosendahl, our $73 million issue, and then we don't have to act. So initially, my thought was, we come in here, we reject it, we get the heck out of here. Because I really don't like the way that we were treated today. I also believe that in the event that the DWP Commission agrees, agrees to meet again tomorrow, that there will be forces assisting the mayor's office and the commissioners into maybe coming to a position that is in sync with ours. So I'm saying, let us, we do not want to be the body that shuts the door. We voted on this yesterday. Again, I'm pissed at their action, but I do think that we have a responsibility to the people of Los Angeles. If it was good enough yesterday, I would hope that it would be good enough today.
Mr. Corretts. Mr. City Attorney first?
Before there's any further discussion on the merits of Ms. Hahn's motion, council must vote on whether the findings, vote to accept the Rule 23 findings. Otherwise, it's not before them. So there has to be a vote on the Rule 23.
All right. On the Rule 23 findings, Mr. Krikorian?
Can you repeat again what this council must find in order to bring a Rule 23 motion?
The two findings for Rule 23 are that there's an immediate need to act, which in this case there is, to act before tomorrow, and that the need arose subsequent to the posting of today's agenda. That's met also because the need arose an hour and a half ago. So in my opinion, the findings are there for Rule 23, but council must first vote on those findings by a vote of 10 votes before discussing the merits of Ms. Hahn's motion.
So we can open the roll on that? Close the roll? Tabulate the vote?
Nine ayes, four noes. That fails.
It fails. Over.
You had the threshold, you know, the discussion. I mean, you're pretty strict on finding the threshold.
You voted no.
Mr. Corretts is next.
I did vote no.
Yeah, you did?
That's it, man. I just pushed my button on the next item.
No, no, it should have been a quarter's yes. I never quit.
You got it switched, Jim.
We switched.
I didn't.
What was your vote?
A no.
Without a professional courtesy. Do you guys know?
Not professional courtesy.
Some people voted against whether that threshold is met or not. The vote on Rule 23 is supposed to be whether this threshold, I've not been here with the city attorney recommended. I've been here other times when you voted against, for instance, when members were making the finding. But this is the first time I've heard the city attorney make the finding and people vote against that. Rule 23 isn't whether you like it or not, it's whether or not you feel that there was urgency, just to consider, not on the substance.
Mr. Smith, a point of order?
I disagree. I want to remind people in this council, and I've said this numerous times again, I will say it tonight, the city attorney's opinion is an opinion. You do not have to vote the way they tell you to. And if you choose not to hear this matter tonight, you can vote no, and that ends the debate.
Mr. City Attorney, we have three speakers on the queue. Your recommendation.
One recommendation would be...
Your opinion, I should say.
One recommendation would be to vote to reconsider it, and the four members who voted no would be considered to be on the prevailing side because the noes, the noes won.
I move to reconsider it.
Mr. Smith, point of order?
Point of order? No. They have a motion.
Motion.
I have a motion. This is decided. I move that I give up my right as a Republican to filibuster when we adjourn.
That's 16.
Mr. Smith moves that we adjourn.
Ask me 16.
Mr. City Attorney, we still have three speakers on the queue. Mr. City Attorney?
At your discretion, you can allow them to speak, but there's been a motion to adjourn. That needs to be entertained.
There's a motion to be adjourned?
Yes.
There are further?
There is a motion on the floor by Mr. Smith to adjourn. Mr. Parks seconds that motion. All right. On the motion to adjourn, open the roll on the motion to adjourn. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, five noes.